With the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Anne, could we get a roll, please?
Schmuckel.
Here.
Corn.
Here.
McCumber.
Here.
Laney McManus.
Here.
Lap.
Here.
Joel McManus.
Here.
And it's noted that Augustine Elliott is absent and excused.
Thank you. All right. First item on our agenda tonight is public comment. We do have public comment at the beginning and at the end of each meeting. I don't know if we have any public hearings tonight, but this will be an opportunity if anybody has anything they'd like to tell the board, or there'll be another opportunity later. So I will go ahead and open up public comment at this time. Just ask you to state your name and address for the record. And as often the case, no one's beating a line up to the microphone. So we'll go ahead and close public comment, move on to the review and approval of the agenda. And if anybody has any conflicts of interest, now would be the time to state those.
None.
I entertain a motion to-
Make a motion, we approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion being supported to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Consent calendar.
The purpose of the consent calendar is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with in one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent calendar be removed therefrom and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent calendar, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening you have minutes from March 11th, 2025. Recommend approval. Bills from the general fund, $487,127.57. Recommend approval. Gordy Frazier, developers escrow fund, storm water reviews and sidewalk assessment, $617.50. General, $5,253.75. Park funds DNR trust fund, $13,800 for a total of $19,671.25. Recommend approval. You have the final, 2025 final assessment role figures, receive and file, and consideration of the flats at Carriage Hill, Water Main, and sanitary sewer extension, closeout, and turnover documents. Recommend approval.
Thank you. Is there any items the board would like to have removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda? Any items the staff would like to have removed and have placed elsewhere? Any items the public would like to have removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda? Hearing none. I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as approved.
Support.
Motion being supported to approve the consent calendar as presented. Any further discussion on that motion? Anne, can we have a roll on that?
Corn.
Yes.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Lap.
Yes.
Elle McManus.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
And Jay McManus.
Yes. Thank you. Excuse me. Correspondence? Chris, I see the draft. County prosperity plan is listed on there.
Yeah, so Commissioner Flynn reached out to me a few weeks ago and provided it to me and just wanted my feedback. And then I supplied it to every board member to review. So the county had asked that we give them our feedback by, I believe it's March 20th. So that day has come and gone. I asked somebody from the county to be here tonight to answer any questions that you had. And obviously, they're unavailable to be here to answer those, so it's unfortunate. But if you read through that plan, that was a work in progress that went over the course of last year. Trustee Corn was a little bit involved and maybe I'll shed some light on it. But it's something that it looks like you're automatically part of that unless you opt out. So if you, at this point, I feel like we can make suggested changes. Whether they hear us and do the changes is one thing. You know, that's an option, or we can just opt out altogether with a resolution. And I don't know under what authority they, you know, say that we're automatically in unless we opt out. I don't know how that works or what statute.
Yeah. And I guess to add to what Chris is saying, there's a lot of discussion amongst supervisors in the county right now. And we have Nicole Blanch on here from Blair tonight, so welcome. Yeah, there's a lot of concern, I think would be a pretty general way of putting it, a mild way of putting it. And, you know, so I would encourage you to read through it. The county did, you know, their deadline, so to speak, for feedback came and went, but they are still looking for feedback. There was several townships, I think Marv Rattke wrote a pretty, pretty nice detailed response to it, and some other townships, I think, signed right on with Marv's response. It was pretty spot on as far as what I think needed to be said. So, you know, I mean, I have concerns, but I won't muddy the waters with those with the board. I'd let you make your own judgments about it. One of them is the whole, you're in unless you opt out. I'm not sure what authority anybody would have to tell a municipality, you're in something if you don't opt out of it. Nothing happens unless this board takes action. So I really question the whole, several parts of the document. But I'd encourage you to read it, and we will be, if you haven't already, and then we will, you know, give the county some more feedback.
Well, I have a concern. Is this, Travers Connect did this document?
It was-
Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, so the county EDC was hired by Travers Connect to be a facilitator of the process. So they were in on all the meetings, took part in the survey, and basically compiled everything that they overheard and put in a document. That's how that came about. Now, I don't know if anything changed from when they authored it and gave it to the county and the county added or changed anything. I don't know the answer to that, but we want to find that out.
Because I have concerns, because we hired, gave Travers Connect money to help with Garfield Townships. And this is what they're coming up with. I've got grave concerns. It's my thoughts.
Yeah, I think it's two separate things. What they're doing for us is one thing, and what they're doing for the county is another. But obviously, at some point, they're going to interact.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, Chloe.
When do we have to opt out, if we're going to opt out?
July.
It's in July.
It's in July. If we have further discussion and decide as a board that we, I would encourage us not to wait that long. You know, I think if we're not interested, probably the sooner the better, as far as letting know we're not interested in participating in that.
So if we have feedback, should we be sending it to you to send to them, or should we be sending it to-
Get it to Chris. I'll work with Chris on a formal response, maybe from, I didn't want to respond without having the board at least, you know, give some input. I didn't want to speak on behalf of the entire board. I could speak for myself, but I didn't want to speak for the entire board until, this is really when, the first time we've, you know, it was, there was less than two weeks from when we got the document that they wanted feedback. And we didn't even have a chance to get it to everybody and look it over, so.
Well, just my first read through it, I had a lot of concerns about it myself. So I read through it. I don't know if everyone else did. Are we able to comment on it now and give feedback now as a board? If we want to take a stance, or do you want us to wait on that?
I mean, feel free to give me some feedback if you'd like now, or give Chris, you know, either way. I mean, I'm like you, Chloe. I read through the first time and I didn't like it. And so I read it in more detail and I liked it even less. So, I mean, that's about the only way I could put it, so.
Now, it says here that the each partner municipality will consider to have approved, affirmed, and adopted this plan by July 1st.
Right. We have to, before July 1st, so yes. So, go ahead. So, if you have some specifics-
Well, I just didn't know. I mean, I want to work cooperatively, obviously, but this document, I didn't feel like fairly reflected municipalities, and I didn't think we had enough chance as a whole body to give input into it. Now, I know the supervisors were invited, but this is something that you got to have buy-in from your, all your boards, I would think, and the community. So it just didn't sit right with me, and I think it reflects poorly on municipalities, like, we're not doing something wrong, even that we're doing everything wrong, when I feel like we do a pretty good job. And not just Garfield, but our other townships around us. You know, I feel like we do work with our other municipalities well. So, I don't know. I felt like the information was a little slanted, and it's not something that I would necessarily want published. So that was my opinion.
I totally agree with Chloe.
Yeah. Well, it's funny, Chloe, because we have supervisors get together about once a month, and you're echoing a lot of the exact comments that were made. But it really, to me, it undermines the whole township government, what we are, the whole, you know, it centralizes once the county, the county used to have a planning department. They got rid of it a few years ago because they weren't very effective, and now they want to take over planning again. And the municipalities, each township's different. Each township has their own, you know, things that their citizens want. And to say we'd give up that kind of authority is concerning to me, so.
Yep, me too. Any other comments?
To the best of my knowledge, the Planning Enabling Act allows the county to review, if they want to have a planning commission, they can review-
Right.
-our planning. They can't change it.
Right.
So it, and it just has kind of, like I said, a negative tone. It starts out with, we're going to, we're doing this to address the economic challenges. A lot of people say economic opportunities as opposed to challenges. You start out with that negative connotation. I don't, it is a little-
Well, there were some, some of the specific ideas, you know, hey, we want to do online permitting. Well, Garfield's already doing online permitting, you know. So we want, you know, we want to look at corridors and emphasize corridor development. And the planning commission's been working on corridor development for years. That's been, you know, so a lot of the things they're saying, townships aren't doing, we've been doing. So it was kind of hard to look at that. I think there is a big opportunity for more communication. I don't know if collaboration's the right word, but communication and making sure, for example, when we did our master plan, every master plan, townships do it, sent to the other townships, neighboring townships, so they can review it and see what our, you know, our goals and our development plans are for areas. So we're doing a lot of that. I don't know that they really realize that's happening. You know, Nicole has the best-kept secret in town. She's getting a Meyer out there, and we didn't find that out till today. So she did a good job of keeping that under wraps. But other than that, you know, we, there is a lot of, already a lot of communication between the townships. So there's a lot of, a lot of comments that were made in there that just, I just disagree with. So I think you hit on a couple of them, so.
Yeah, I'd agree. It read very negative to me. And while we do have some hurdles to economic development in our area, I'm not sure what they list is the number one hurdle is what I would agree with is the number one hurdle.
Right.
I think there are some others that are higher priorities.
Well, I think the concept, if you had a really rural area, rural county that didn't have local zoning, it didn't have local planning commissions, it probably, you know, plays better and makes more sense. But, you know, and then it's, you know, then the city's listed as one of the 16 municipalities, but they're not involved in the agreement. So the city's not even part of the agreement. And so, you know, so that didn't make a lot of sense to me either, so.
That's another story.
Yeah, well, exactly. So, you know, I would encourage you to, you know, put some things, thank you for your comments. Any more comments, appreciated. But give them to Chris, and Chris and I'll get together probably in the next couple of days, and by the end of the week, and maybe formally pen a response that, that we're concerned about the document. I think it was a fair statement, so. All right. Any other comments on that?
I say we should just opt out.
If anybody wants a copy of it, we'd be glad to send it to you if you haven't seen it. It's called the Unified, 2020, 2030 Unified Prosperity Plan, is what it's called, so. All right, we'll move on to, I'm sorry.
I said I think we should just opt out.
Well, that would be my recommendation to the board, but I didn't want to make that recommendation until you had time to review it. So, yeah, I would exactly agree. But if we, we can pen a resolution to that effect for an upcoming meeting, it might be a race between the townships to see who opts out first. I'm not sure. So, but anyway, yeah, I think you're, I think that's the direction I'd be going, so. All right. I don't see our county commissioner here tonight, so I don't think we have a county commissioner's report, so move on to, we have our road commission member here, but he's here to, going to talk on another topic a little later on the agenda. So we're not going to skip Al. We're just going to have him come up a little later on and talk about Potter Road. Clerk's report.
Chloe and I are in the middle of our audit, and we found out that with the great ARPA money that we received from the county, we've been over the limit that we can spend without having to have a single audit done. So they are auditing, we have to have a single audit just on our ARPA funds. So there will be an increase in the, obviously, the audit that we're having. They said we had everything organized and ready to go, so it should be minimal, like around $3,000 more. So I just wanted to report that things going well. They're happy with the reporting we've done, but there will be an additional cost. So they'll be coming as a budget amendment soon.
How long will the audit take approximately?
It'll be done by June.
Okay.
Takes a while.
Oh, yeah. I know, they're intense, so.
I just wanted to report that single audit.
Okay, thank you. Chris, Township Manager's report.
Okay. Just wanted to let you know that I became aware of a Grand Travers County Parks, well, through the Parks Director, who let me know about a future meeting schedule, about a committee, Natural Education Reserve Advisory Committee. And when I reached out to ask about it, and he provided me with some bylaws, which basically says Garfield Township is a member of it. And he recently sent me an email and said that, for some reason, we probably should no longer be part of that, going back to like '21. So I'm trying to figure out what is it that he feels that we should be out of it. I know that we had a contract with Grand Travers Conservation District that we ended in '21. We also pay for their services through our millage, and we also have this location in our township. So I'm thinking maybe the severing of that contract is what he's thinking, is that we no longer need to be part of the committee. You know, maybe we should, because it's still located in the township, and we do a lot of development around there, we should be collaborating. So right now, I'm just working with the Parks Director to figure out why, and I just kind of want to let you know that this kind of came up on the radar, just kind of recently. So, Pro Rose Lane update. So we met with the residents on that road. One of the family members is in Florida, not coming back to the end of April, and they wanted to be part of the conversation in trying to come up with a solution to make it work. So the first meeting in May, you know, we're not forcing the timeframe here, and I told them that. We need to get it done sooner than later, but if your family needs to be in town to be part of this, then we can do it during that meeting. There's ideas of potentially coming up with a different name other than Pro Rose Lane, and maybe not using Burnley Road, because that would violate our ordinance. But you have Burnley Estates right down the road. I also threw out Burnley Road, right? The ordinance says you should avoid having similar names, but it doesn't say you shall. So I'm working with the county to figure out if that's something that they could buy into as an option before I come back to you and lay them all out. So that'll come to you in our first meeting in May. Just wanted to update you on that. And then I got a voicemail from a citizen who says, kudos and wonderful job, happy taxpayer, and thanks for your, for our services. He called in to report a street light out, and it was like fixed the next day. So we just reached out to the company who maintains it, and that was fixed. And then our assessor performed some training for Eagle. Basically, it was a webinar for understanding the Land Division Act, so she just did a virtual training, and then Eagle sent a letter thanking her for her doing that. So that was kind of nice, I thought. Just wanted to mention that. And I attended the Travers Connect Economic Strategy Session related to grants. Learned a lot about grants, and several other members of this board were there as well. And I am going to get a tour of our public work facility on April 10th, just so I can get a better understanding of our infrastructure. And then Trustee Lap has said she would, she would like to attend. So to avoid a quorum, I believe we probably have room for one more.
I'll be attending that as well, Tim.
Yep, and Supervisor McManus is going as well, so I guess that's, that's two, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we could have three of us on that tour without-
When is that?
It's April 10th. I believe it's like 2:00 PM till 5:00 PM, like a three-hour window. And I guess if you want to attend, let me know, and I can make you part of the tour.
I would like to.
Pump stations.
You've done it?
Pump stations, holding tanks, just kind of familiarize yourself with our water, more with our water system. We've had a lot of water discussions lately, but more about the system.
I would like to also.
Okay. That's all I have. If anybody has questions.
Thank you, Chris. From the supervisor report, I do have a few things. It's been a busy, last week was a busy week. We did a BPW meeting on the 13th, and there's still talk. And Chuck, I'd like to sit down with you and talk a little more about the past, about the authority, taking the BPW to an authority. There's more talk of that on a committee to try to push that forward. So I'd like to be, I'm going to be involved in that, but I'd like to get some history on that at some point. There is, as part of the city negotiations on water, we are getting master meters installed, so we'll have real-time data for water flowing into Garfield from the city. Unfortunately, getting bids, the bids went out, or the opportunity to bid went out, and nobody bid on it. So we're tailing it as a, just taking quotes and getting fast-tracking that. We need to get those meters in as soon as we can. We did have a meeting, attended the city commission meeting on the 17th, and we'll talk a little bit more, a good meeting and making good progress on the water. I'll detail that a little bit in a minute. We did, Chris and I and our city engineer attended that meeting. The next day, we had fire board, which, only thing of note, a new firefighter, a full-time firefighter was sworn in that day, which was kind of neat to attend and be involved in that. And then the 19th, we had a meeting with the, talking about the commons. We've had, we've heard conversations about the commons water issue in Brownfield, the city of Township, and the Barnes were all in attendance at that, and had some pretty good progress on that. So I guess we'll go back to, all that ties back in with our negotiations with the city. You know, a month ago, we sat here and it wasn't, it wasn't a pretty picture a month ago. We weren't very optimistic, but we've had some really good negotiations with the city. We put a proposal, rather than hashing out the past, we said, here, this is, here's how we, we have three main issues. This is how we think we can move forward and beneficial for both us and the city. And, and it was well-received, and we're progressing nicely. Last week, we were, an additional million gallon a day was allocated to Township, which gets us back in business. We're issuing water permits again, and so that's good. It buys us some time, and that's what we needed. And regardless of what the peaking factors and things that were being used, none of that really matters. And once we get these master meters, I mentioned earlier, and it'll make all that obsolete, quite frankly. We proposed, we're still working on the Long Lake Agreement with the water in the Long Lake, and we've proposed a, treating it like the sewer does. For example, Blair, Blair's sewer hooks to Garfield, Garfield into the city, and it's called a multi-user agreement. And so we're proposing that for the water system, so that'll legitimize the Long Lake connection. And so we're hoping, and that's, appears to be well-received. We're hoping, we're still progressing with that. And then the Barnes, as we, you know, the Barnes, Historic Barnes Park and the whole commons area, historically, everybody knows has low water pressure, and we, we know that, you know, they want to service that from Garfield's infrastructure, which it's a city district right now. And that would really cause a lot of, not problems, but a need for a lot of negotiation and calculation of infrastructure payback and transmission fees, and that would, could take some time. So our township proposal was that, once the Brownfield connection is made, they've put in for Brownfield money to make the connection to fix that water issue, that that entire pressure district just becomes a Garfield pressure district. And it, kind of a light bulb went off, and so that makes a lot more sense, because then we don't have to renegotiate all those costs and all that other stuff. So all those proposals that we put on the table were, were well-received, and we seem to be moving forward with those. So we did have a conversation then yesterday with Mark Middleton, our water attorney, and have him working on getting all those things in print and start working forward with the city on those. So, kind of a lot going on in the last week, or so, two weeks. So, and that's all I have. Any questions? All right. So we'll move on to unfinished business. First thing is actually, I mentioned earlier, I didn't know if we had any public hearings. We do. Public hearing, consideration of Copper Ridge PUD major amendment, and it's a findings of fact tonight, and our planner, John Sykes, is going to make a couple of comments.
Good evening, John Sykes, Planning Director. Just wanted to highlight this item which came before you previously as an introduction and setting the public hearing which you have this evening for your consideration. This is an amendment, major amendment to the Copper Ridge Plan Unit Development. The PUD was established in 2000 and has been developing over the years. Copper Ridge LLC is seeking to have some of the land use designations for, for unbuilt sites to provide some flexibility, so they can work towards conclusion of that portion of the PUD and build it out. There's, they've gone through the process of the review by the Planning Commission. Planning Commission has held a public hearing. Commission adopted findings of fact and has recommended those for consideration by the Township Board. So there are, for your consideration at the end of the PD report that's in your packet, there's actually just two motions. One of them is to adopt the findings of fact, which were recommended by the Planning Commission. And then the other subsequent motion is to approve the actual PUD major amendment. There is a table in there that shows the proposed permitted uses and highlighted, which we think, working with the Planning Commission, it makes sense, it fits in with the mixed use theme of Copper Ridge. So there, I'm here available for any questions. Also, the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, John. All right. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open it up to the public. If you'd like to make any comments about this amendment to the PUD, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and let us know what you want to say.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chuck Buxton. I live at 4244 Eagle Vale. I'm a full-time, permanent resident. What I'd like to talk about briefly tonight is, I have a few concerns about the public safety, or pedestrian safety specifically, that has to be dealt with if this PUD amendment is approved. I know that you are in possession of our Jan Freeman's correspondence to the board dated February 25th, 2025, where she's outlined some of those concerns. And I just thought I'd like to put a fine point on it to make sure that everybody understands what we'd like to see happen in terms of keeping the community safe and keeping pedestrians safe. There are some conditions right now that are, that I think are a problem, and I'd like to just briefly go over those. The major area of concern right now is the entrance to the development from Silver Lake Road. If you, if you're familiar with the area, right now, Copper Ridge Drive, the sidewalk on Copper Ridge Drive ends at Eastern Sky Drive. And for walkers to get to the pathway that is, that runs along Silver Lake Road there, they have to deal with, they have to deal with traffic coming down Copper Ridge Drive, traffic turning off of the road that lets people out of the surgery center, traffic that's coming down Eastern Sky Drive and going in either direction on Copper Ridge Drive, and then also any traffic that happens to be turning into the development from Silver Lake Road. So to get to that pathway, you have to kind of run this gauntlet on foot. You either have to walk in the road or walk on the grass. There's no sidewalk, okay? And just for reference, that pathway is a pathway that leads to the Historic Barnes section in one direction and the YMCA in the other direction. Those are both desirable walking destinations. I do walk them frequently, and I, and I see that many of my neighbors do as well. So that's, that's probably the, in terms of- So that's, that's probably the, in terms of safety, that in my mind, as somebody that walks this, is probably the real sticking point here. Also, the Commons Trailhead is another great place to walk to, but there's no way to get to the Commons Trailhead with, on Copper Ridge Drive. There are no sidewalks on Copper Ridge Drive either. So what you have to do is you have to walk up Copper Ridge Drive, then you have to walk through the parking lot of Building F. And walking through parking lots is an issue unto its own. So, so that's a problem there. City View. City View is a street that allows you to come into the, into the development from Barnes Road. There are no sidewalks on either side of City View. If you are on foot on City View, it's pretty dangerous because what you've got there is you've got a limited sight distance in both directions because of the hill there. So walking on, walking on City View is, is a dangerous proposition. I will acknowledge that there are stop signs, but there are no markings or pedestrian crosswalks where those stop signs exist in, in the development right now. And they help, but I can tell you from walking through there that what happens is people are looking, drivers are looking for Building F, Building D. They're looking for the building numbers, they're looking for the, for letters, numbers. And they are looking for them on winding, narrow roads. And I've, and I've witnessed people just running stop signs. Not that they're intent on breaking the law, they're just looking for other things. So I think that, I think it's a problem there. And finally, I guess I just wanna say that this week, on a walk, I saw a woman, a young woman and her children on the grassy area coming off of the pathway from Silver Lake Road. Where they were going, I don't know, but they were headed for the confluence that I've described earlier on. Also today, as recently as today, I saw the nursery school children assembling at the corner of, at the corner of Copper Ridge and Skycrest. I'm sorry, Skycrest. The children walk through the development. When the weather's good, they walk through the development all of the time. So there's a concern there too. And, and as the weather improves, what you're gonna see happening in our subdivision and throughout the development is people are gonna walk, are gonna be leaving those buildings. We see them in the summertime, they come out, they choose to use their lunch hour to walk through the development. And so, so it'd be nice if, it'd be nice if these, there was safe passage for them throughout the development. So in closing, I just wanna say that this amendment request is an opportunity to, is an opportunity to correct some of these pedestrian safety problems that have existed for, for a while now. I argue, I would argue that they should've been taken care of long ago. And I ask that you, in considering this approving, the approval of the amendment, that you please help by making pedestrian safety a consideration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Dawn Lawrenson. I live at 4158 Eagleview. Two things that keep coming up, but it's like, we always talk about things change. And you had this plan for 25 years and there's no changes. You can't make changes. You have to stick with the original plan when you now have a nice development in area. Find that kinda sad. But the other thing is, if you're gonna do this, like he was pointing out, that there's pedestrians, has anybody looked at the traffic lately? When I first moved in there, we didn't have very many houses. And I could get out onto Barnes from City View and Sky View and all that, just zip right out there and get out there. Now, during certain times of day, like when school lets out, when work gets out, you can be there for three to five minutes trying to make a left turn. And it's very tricky sometime because of the heavy traffic, because you're getting more and more coming from North Long Lake and the other areas as those developments are going up. And it's not a place, because you have a light a block away, you'd have to have two time lights to get people out. Or you're gonna have to have everybody funnel down through the Copper Ridge Center to use that light to get out. And it doesn't work on the weekends, currently. And that would be something that you'd have to consider 'cause the traffic pattern is gonna increase if you put some kind of development in there. That where you'll have people coming and going and coming and going and that's gonna feed into the, into the traffic pattern. And I just wonder if anybody's even bothered to look at that because I've seen the change and I drive it. And I wonder if anybody else has and what, how you're going to deal with that. That's just my concern.
Thank you. Well, I don't see anybody else standing up at this time, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. John, did you wanna answer to any of those questions?
Just wanted to take an opportunity to respond to the concerns that we heard. And we've heard these same concerns previously and I think it's important to understand the process and also the limitations of planning and zoning. So the, the PUD was approved in 2000 and I think at the time, you know, walkability and the importance of that was probably not as more, as pronounced as it is today. But I think it's important to understand that there was an approved plan done in 2000 to develop this in conformance with the ordinance at that time, which it has done. And this is a private development. These are private streets, these are private properties, developments and so forth. So there's a point where, while it meets the ordinance and requirements at the time, to do improvements beyond that is really the responsibility of the owners, not just the owners of Copper Ridge LLC, but collectively the ownership in there. And there are limitations by which were the ability to revisit developments and in providing some of these extra amenities. Do we find value in them? Absolutely. If this was going through our standards and processes today, it would be probably a lot different. What we've been encouraging is for those property owners to work on these private streets and these private elements to come up with some resolution to that. Ultimately, it's a cost to those that live there and, and will have to consider it in incurring that to make these improvements. The process by which we go through this is a development which is, I would say, probably 90 to 95% complete for the Planning Commission to, or in the Township Board to require these additional requirements within the plan. I don't think I would be in meeting the zoning ordinance requirements and I would, would see that they really aren't something that could be completed as part of this process. It's not to say that it can't be done. It can, these are, again, private properties, private infrastructure that can be resolved by the ownership collectively within the Copper Ridge PUD.
Was there any kind of a traffic study done during this? Probably not for this amendment, was there?
There was a traffic study done initially when the Copper Ridge PUD development went in, but that wasn't an internal study. It was designed at, you know, through engineers on the internal this. Traffic impact studies are typically the impact of the development on county roads and, and that process. So that's why it resulted in a traffic signal there on Silver Lake Road as part of the main entrance and so forth. So that's, that's what was done at, once it's done and approved and adopted and it starts under construction, the goings-on and the internal private road network are really handled by the, the ownership there.
That was 25 years ago, yeah.
Mm-hmm. That'd essentially be a, just a community plan where everybody contributes.
Yeah, that, that was, that's what we would recommend is, is they come up with their, I mean, they can address these issues, they can, they would have to cover the costs. We can't use, you know, public resources on, on these types of improvements. It has to come in with the collective ownership of, within the Copper Ridge PUD to come up with those solutions.
Okay, thank you. Connie, did you wanna make? Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
Thank you. Connie Dunaway, 9590 Edgewood, Traverse City. Developer of Copper Ridge. Yes, you're right, there has been a lot of changes over time and you're right. It, it wasn't as walkable as we thought it would be. We'll work with the condominium owners and have a meeting and walk the property and just exactly what John was encouraging that we do is, is talk to them, find out the, where the pain points are. 'Cause safety is absolutely essential and a concern. There are several points at Copper Ridge, because of the significant grade change from the surgery center to Eagle's View is 200-foot drop. 200 feet is a lot. It's not your average Grand Traverse Mall, that's flat. So there's grade changes, there is trees. There's a couple areas that we would've loved to put a beautiful sidewalk down, but the township required trees along particularly Forest Drive, where the, where the surgery center is. So anyway, between trees and grade changes and limited land, there's some reasons why sidewalks stop, 'cause they can't be put in. So anyway, it's not your responsibility. I don't feel like you need to force us to be, provide safety 'cause we are very concerned and, and we'll revisit it with the residential community and, and we'll walk through it together.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for John or for Connie? Thanks, John. Well, you, the, yeah, Planning Commission has held public hearings and there's recommendations from the Planning Commission in your packet. So I would see what the board wants to do.
I would like to make a motion that the findings of fact for application SUP 2000-08-0 in support of the requested amendment to the Copper Ridge Plan Unit Development and has recommended for adoption by the Planning Commission be adopted.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Motion made supported that the findings of fact for application SUP 2000-08-00 be adopted. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Might be a roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Well, I'm sorry. And we have a roll call on that.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Lapp.
Yes.
L McManus.
Yes.
J McManus.
Yes, sorry about that.
I make a motion that the application SUP-2000-08-0, isn't that the same one?
No.
Okay.
That was the findings of fact was the first one.
Submitted by Sarah Kiefer on behalf of the Copper Ridge LLC for an amendment to the Copper Ridge Plan Unit Development be approved subject to the following conditions, 1 through 4 as indicated in Planning Report 2025-23.
I will second that motion.
Okay, motion made supported the, the application SUP 2000, the met application 2008-0 submitted by Karen Lieber, be approved with the conditions 1 through 4 as mentioned in the Planning Department Report 2025-23. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yep.
All right. Any further discussion on that motion? And we have a roll call on that, please.
Schmuckel.
Yes.
Corn.
Yes.
L McManus.
Yes.
Lapp.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
J McManus.
Yes. Okay, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is discussion of the capital improvement plan and...
And close that door.
Discussion of capital improvement plan and formation of CIP committees. A CIP committee. Chris, I think this one's you.
And if John, John's here to answer any questions too, if the board has any. So I've brought this up several times. You reviewed the draft plan back in 23 and at this point, we would like to have the board make a motion to approve the forming of a capital planning committee. And on page six of the document, let's make sure I'm on the right page, it talks about plan development and it gives the, the makeup of that committee, which would include the supervisor, billing and grounds committee representative, parks and rec commission representative, myself, the manager, planning director and our township engineer. And again, the, you know, it spells out in the plan what their role is and I feel like it's the committee that'll do all the, the hard work in putting the plan together and then bringing it to the board for recommendation. So it allows, allows to be, work to be done at the committee level. So tonight, I'm asking for the formation of the committee, who will then convene, continue working on the plan with a goal to bring it back to the, to board for a final adoption. And it can be done by a simple motion and it can be a resolution as well, but I feel like a motion is appropriate to form the committee.
Any questions on that?
Can I just ask a question? So this document here is not complete.
It is not.
And, okay, 'cause it didn't look complete.
It's been a draft for a little, a little while and then this committee will be doing more of the hard work.
Okay.
Along with staff.
So tonight, it's just about having a committee to complete the plan?
Correct.
Okay.
And then one other thing I wanna note, it talks about Parks and Rec Committee Representative and the building and grounds. So currently trustee Schmuckel serves on the Parks and Rec Commission and she also serves on the building and grounds along with Treasurer McCumber. So if you wanted to designate who the representative would be and kinda have more than just Denise, you know, filling both of those roles, that's just something I wanted to bring up.
Yeah, Denise can represent parks and I'll represent building. I'd be happy to be part of this process.
Yes, I would too. And like I said, if we, I can represent parks and she can represent building, that would be great.
To me, that makes sense, but it's your call in the end.
Is that okay, Supervisor?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, whatever you guys wanna do. I know the Supervisor, I definitely wanna be on it, you know. So I don't, I don't have any problem, anybody that wants to be on this, you know.
With us, that's three, we can't have another.
Can't have, can't have three, can't have more than that, right?
Unless you wanna post it.
Yeah, I don't think we wanna post every committee meeting for, for capital improvement. There are a lot of things and we'll talk about as, as time goes on. There are a lot of things we need to prioritize and some of them are with water.
That was my question too, because you're talking about parks, you're talking about building and grounds, but then who specifically is on water sewer? 'Cause that's gonna be a big one.
That would be me.
Supervisor would be.
'Cause I'm on the BPW board.
Yeah, 'cause she's, he's on the BPW board.
Okay.
And water has become my new favorite topic.
I think that's probably gonna be the major expense coming up here. So that's, it's gonna be difficult and it's gonna be expensive.
Yeah. No, there's a lot of things and, and we met with, with our city, our township engineer the other day and kind of prioritizing just water and sewer capital improvements that will lead to happen and so we have a good handle on what those are. And of course, those are handled with different funds than most of the other things are. But we'll definitely be moving on some, some projects.
I do also wanna say that this does have a lot of financial planning aspects to it, so I feel like I could help with that because I manage the investments. I mean, this is huge for our township to have this in order to help me manage our money and our investments and our planning. So I feel like I could also bring that to the... So I feel like I could also bring that to the table too, you know, keep the spending appropriate for certain areas.
You're recommending, you're recommending four people, you and then the three other members, or, well, that would be Parks and Rec, or, uh, who else would be on it?
Buildings and ground, parks and rec.
Planning.
Planning.
Planning, okay.
Engineer, myself, and you, the supervisor.
Yeah, okay. So seven of us, okay.
But I have one more question. On here, there's $75,000? Oh, that's 2026. Okay, never mind. I read the year wrong. I thought it was this year for a water reliability study, but that hasn't started yet, I'm assuming.
Correct.
Okay. I looked at it as 25.
Okay. So do you want a motion to create that committee?
The motion to, um, form the capital planning committee and then the membership. I can give this, this is page six. It lists who's on it, if somebody needs that, or their motion. And there's six members.
We make a motion to approve forming a CIP committee to finalize the draft as presented.
I support that motion.
All right. Motion made supported to, like Chuck said, create the committee to finalize the draft for a CIP and the membership as Chris listed, supervisor, Parks Rec, himself, uh, everyone, he listed seven members, so. Any further discussion on that motion? Do I need a roll call for that one? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? You guys got to remind me when I do have a roll call. We weren't spending any money on the last one, I didn't think I had to do a roll call on it. Okay. Um, discussion on bathroom facility at River East Recreation Area, so, Chris, go ahead.
Okay, that's why I kept my manager report short. Um, so you have a letter in your packet from our engineer about the bathroom upgrade at River East, and this project goes back to last year, uh, roughly summer, like July. We signed an agreement with the company to use a prefab bathroom, and the cost of the prefab bathroom was less than a stick built, and that's why we chose to do that at that time. And, um, the company that's based in Ohio has been having a difficult time getting certification through the state of Michigan to be able to sell the bathrooms to be installed in Michigan. And when I looked at email communication between our park staff, the company, and talking with our engineer, it's, it's like they have been avoiding answering the question, okay, when are we going to get our bathroom? So they've just been dodging it. So our engineer had a meeting with them recently and they've told her that it's more like, um, the fall. It's supposed to be spring or summer, and then, um, there isn't even confidence that it's going to show up in, in the fall. Um, there's a potential that it could show up in '26. And, um, our play structure has been delivered already, and that is proposed to be built at the end of April and the beginning of May. So when you start having a lot of activity at the park with, um, I think there's one porta potty out there right now, um, that could create a sanitary issue. Um, so I know that we have a Parks and Rec meeting on the 7th of April, I believe, but if you, um, you know, if you, if the board here kicks it a little bit down the road to that meeting to discuss and come back, you, you drag it out another month before you make a decision on whether to go a different route. So, um, working with our engineer, we put some, um, information together, um, and if you look at the spreadsheet that has these colors on it, the, the yellow color is basically the current, um, proposal for the prefab bathroom, and then the green is for a stick built on-site bathroom that, and then the additional costs. So when I, uh, calculated them, if you were to go the stick built route, you would have roughly a $26,000 difference in the engineering cost, um, roughly $123,000 difference in the bathroom itself, um, totaling $149,975 for a total project difference. So you would, in essence, have to, uh, make a motion to go with a stick built versus the prefab plan, and also there is a, um, in a, uh, a contract, uh, for the supervisor to sign with our engineer, uh, authorizing her to do the additional services, and that was, you know, $26,000 and some change. So, um, I, just from my, my seat, you, you're going to have walking trail here fairly quick out there, you're going to have a parking lot, you're going to have a fully operational park with maybe not, you know, no bathrooms still the following year. We could have, um, a four-stall bathroom, a unit brought out there by our current vendor at roughly $1,500 a month, so that would add a couple additional, and we also looked into, um, a higher-end bathroom that would be on a trailer that you might see at big events or weddings, and the companies that we reached out to are willing to commit because they're worried about vandalism, and those are typically designed for, uh, weekend big events like weddings and such. So to, um, commit it to us for six months, they, they really don't want to do that just yet. So we checked into that. That obviously would be a cheaper option versus the stick built, but that isn't even guaranteed either.
Yeah.
Um, if we go the stick built, how long till they can have it up and ready?
So, um, I believe Jennifer, hopefully I'm not screwing this up as far as, uh, projects, I'm fairly certain she could get, request bids relatively quick, and she also said that, um, AJ's, who was, uh, picked as the, um, general contractor, the lowest bid, if we use them, um, we could expedite this. You know, she can't give a guarantee, but it'd be much quicker than the fall.
I don't think we should wait for the Parks and Rec meeting. I think we should make that decision right now, because we need a bathroom out there, especially with the fact with that, the, the playground going in, and the dog parts are starting to get busy out there.
It is.
I think we really need to make a decision tonight.
Yeah, it would, and there was a, probably even money chance it won't be till next year, you know, so it's not even a sure. If, if they could give us a date where we knew we'd have it, we could operate a little differently. And I think, and I don't know if Chris mentioned, they did commit to giving us our deposit back, get our money back.
Correct, yes.
Uh, because we gave them 10% down.
Okay.
And they can't deliver, and they've at least verbally agreed that they would pay us that money back, so.
So I have a question. You, you mentioned a temporary bathroom at $1,500 a month. What, what is that?
It's a four-stall unit that comes on a trailer together and then they put it on the ground.
It's basically a portageon on steroids. It's a, it's a four-stall.
It's a four-stall portageon.
Yes.
But it's not the fancy ones that you have at the party?
No.
Okay, because I thought, that's really cheap, actually.
Yeah.
Um, we should probably get that in the meantime.
Well, that's, that's a thought too. Until we get the stick built up and running, we'd get the portable one in there. We'd need something out there, people can walk their dogs or play on the playground or use something.
This is almost April. I'd be shocked if a stick built was built by September.
Do we have the money in the Parks and Rec fund? I make a motion that we go ahead with the stick.
Before you do that, Chloe was going to answer your question, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This was an ARPA project and was under contract by the end of the year, and so I looked into it, and you can replace it with another contract as long as it's substantially the same purpose as the original contract, same scope. So this would be the same purpose, same scope.
Okay.
So we can use our ARPA money that we had obligated for the original bathroom, but this difference of $149 would come out of our park fund.
Okay.
So I don't know, or we could do it out of our general fund.
We had a contingency in there, yeah.
Well, we did have a contingency, so, um, I don't know, do we want to do it out of the park fund, or do we, because...
We could see what's left in there, and we could, could make a decision with it. We have money either way.
Yeah. I mean, we could, in our motion, say to take it from the general fund, or I, I would just recommend taking it from the park fund. I think it would be fine.
Okay. Sorry, I didn't want to interrupt your motion, but I didn't want to answer the money question.
Um, I make a motion that we go with a stick built bathroom for River East with the difference of $149,000 coming out of the park fund.
Support.
Okay. Motion was made supported to go with the stick built with the additional funds. Chris, do you have a question or a comment?
Yeah, I just, um, would like support that we work with the current contractor, because that contractor was supposed to do everything. The parking lot, the trail, the installation of the bathroom, they're going to install the, the prefab. That will save time from having to go out for all new beds.
Okay.
So I, I just would like support for that as well.
This is something they normally do? Build buildings?
So in talking with the Parks Department today, you know, they're, they're a general contractor, so our understanding is that they'll be, um, um, like contracting out the, the parking lot and all that stuff, maybe through like an asphalt company, and they'll probably do the same thing with the bathroom. That, that's what we believe. I don't know 100%. They're more of like a general contractor.
And is this price bid from them?
It's, it's through our engineer.
Estimate. It's an estimate.
Or the estimate is, is based on AJ's?
Based on their belief, um, so Jennifer said, um, they looked to spec a similar bathroom as in, on East Silver Lake Road. So, um, so they do the design and all that, and that's an estimate, which is probably pretty conservative. And, um, you know, and there were concerns about how the one at East Silver Lake Road was built, um, for year-round use with the insulation, the heating and stuff, so we brought that up as a concern that this needs to be built, um, maybe a little bit better than the other one.
Right.
I, I might be wrong, but I mentioned, I think that when Silver Lake was built originally, I think we were winterizing. I think we were shutting it down in the winter, or at least they had locks on the doors where it would lock at night.
Yep.
Now I think it's open all the time, so. Not possible.
Didn't we have an exceptionally high heating bill at Silver Lake?
Chloe, did you?
Because it's not insulated.
So could we put solar panels or something on here to heat for the heat?
I'm sorry, what's that?
I'm sorry, hold on, Laurie, go first. I mean, I recall at an earlier meeting, we had an exceptionally high heating bill for Silver Lake bathroom.
Right.
So if we're going to keep this one open, can we put in the plan some sort of renewable energy for heating year-round, so we're not, or some sort of heating method?
At least if it's built to specs for your own use.
Well, the one at Silver Lake is not insulated. It wasn't, it wasn't built to, to...
I don't think Silver Lake was built anticipating year-round use. It wasn't when it was originally built. That's been...
So this is going to be insulated.
25 years ago, probably, or 20 close, when that was built, so. Sorry, Chloe, did you, you had raised your hand in your comment.
Just my comment, not to be a stick in the mud, but I, I do think we should go out for a bid, just because it's in our purchasing policy. If you spend over a certain amount, and it's just a good practice, I do think that we want to see this expedited, but this is a big item. So I don't know how the other board members feel, but I don't feel like I could just offer it to AJ's because they're doing the work. I mean, I, I don't know, can we, do we, I know we have exceptions if it's an emergency, but this isn't, I don't think an emergency, but, I don't know. Am I the only one who feels that way? I'll probably vote no, just because I feel like we should go out for bids, but that's just me.
I'd be more comfortable with that myself.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I think we should get an, get an ROP out right away. Let's, you know, let AJ's know what's going on.
And their bid might be the lowest.
Because they're anticipating doing the work, so I'm sure that they will bid on it, so.
Absolutely, I agree.
Okay.
So, you want to rescind, you, you change your motion to add that it would, we put out an ROP? Get, all right, it's ROPs, that's the right terminology.
RFP.
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 I will change my motion to add, put it out for an RFP.
Your second.
Oh, yeah, I'll second it. Yeah.
I thought you would. Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? Okay, so we're, the motion is that we will, uh, put out for bids and stick build, uh, the bathrooms. And, Anne, can we have a roll call on that?
Schmuckel.
Yes.
McCumber.
Yes.
Lapp.
Yes.
L McManus.
Yes.
Uh, Corn.
Yes.
J McManus.
Yes. Thank you. Thanks, Chris. All right, and now we're up to item D, which is consideration of the employee handbook earned sick time policy amendment. Who's handling that one?
Chris?
Me again. So, I know I said that we probably wouldn't have to change this, so I, uh, that was not truthful, not intentionally, but through our audit, the auditor suggested we add a maximum rollover amount, um, because if we had an unlimited amount, it's an unfunded liability. So we limit it to 388 hours, and I believe through our committee conversation, that was to mimic a short-term, um, disability plan that we don't currently offer, so it would allow an employee to save up that much and, and be an equivalent to a short-term disability plan. So, um, just, we added a maximum carryover is all.
I have a question on that. If someone leaves, do they get paid for that?
It said 40 hours.
We've limited it.
Okay, so you limit it to 40, so they're not going to be able to get paid for 388 hours?
No.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, 40, I think is the max. Um, I just wanted to make one comment beyond the committee. At first you were not allowed to when the law passed to rollover, but it allows for it now to limit rollover if you upfront, front-load the time, which we do. So that's why we're now allowed to limit the rollover, so that's why we're doing it now. At first you weren't allowed to limit the rollover. So that's why the change had to be made after the fact, because there were some changes made, okay?
Well, as many changes have been made to this new law, I'm, uh...
No kidding.
But essentially, what we're doing is mimicking a short-term disability benefit for employees. A township-funded, short-term disability benefit, because we don't currently offer one, which is a nice benefit to have.
I'll leave that up for the Personnel Committee to come back with a proposal sometime on it, so.
So we need a, a motion for that?
To approve the requested changes.
Anybody want to make that motion?
Where is the limit to how much you pay out written? Is that in the...
I don't think there's a motion pre-written, I think it's just...
Termination.
It's page, uh, 124 of your packet.
It's a different section. Got it.
I make a motion that we, um, adopt the earned sick time as stated.
I'll support it.
Motion made supported to, uh, amend section 100.1 of the earned sick time in the handbook as it's presented in the packet. Any further discussion on that? I don't need a roll call for this one, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right. We've got the unfinished stuff done, let's move on to new business. Um, consideration of quotes for parking lot ceiling at the Township Hall in Silver Lake Recreation Area.
So I, um, included a letter in your packet with a breakdown of three quotes that we received, various vendors, and, um, the totals for doing ceiling at the Silver Lake, East Silver Lake Park, and the Township Office, um, were kind of at the bottom. Black Magic was around $20,000, A Seal Right, $18,000, and Picture Perfect was $16,000. We last had our, um, lots sealed in 2021, uh, by Black Magic, who was, uh, good to work with. Um, we typically like to do it about every three years, but it's purely dependent on weather. You know, if you have a lot of snow, a lot of snow plowing across the parking lots, it's gonna deteriorate the ceiling, the sealant, um, sooner than if we didn't have snow and plows going over them. Um, so, um, just looking for the board's support to go with one of the vendors, so we can arrange to have both areas sealed and, crack sealed. And then also there's a section out by our sign in our parking lot here that's cracked. Uh, and they feel like it would be appropriate to fix that at the same time.
So we've used Black Magic before?
We have. And according to our, um, maintenance staff, they work around us, they're, at least, they've been very, um, not very disruptive to the operation, do it on the days that we're off, so.
Would the other people work with this as well, or?
Um, I would assume they would.
I don't, I don't know, uh, much about any one of these three companies, so I, I, I wouldn't, I couldn't recommend it. They local, they in the township, or they, I'm sure, I'm assuming they're local.
Black Magic, Traverse City.
Ace is Inarlocken, Picture Perfect, Buckley.
Picture Perfect is Buckley, so, yeah.
Okay, they're local, pretty much, so.
So the intent was to award one company both bids? As opposed to splitting it?
I think I would like to do that, but I mean, you can certainly split them up, and I don't think they said that you had to go with all or none.
It's funny, they're all really close on the Town Hall. They're all within a hundred bucks. It's, it's, it's the, it's the recreation area that's a four thousand dollar difference, top to bottom. When you look at the, the Town Hall, it goes from sixty-eight, sixty-eight, sixty-six, and sixty-eight, basically. But, uh, to Chuck's point, I'm not sure why. What's your pleasure?
I don't have much experience with any of them.
I, I don't either. I'm not.
What about our road commission?
You've done a little bit of this work in the past.
The asphalt companies don't believe it has any value. The companies that make the glue that hold the asphalt together. Said there's no scientific credible evidence.
He said you can't hear, yeah. Yeah, can you go with the microphone?
I cannot speak as an expert, as an expert authority on this, because I'm not in the seal coat business. Alan Lehman, five zero eight nine, Case Court, Traverse City. Um, but when I was in the asphalt paving business, the refineries who called on us that made the glue that hold your roads, our roads together, found no credible evidence that the seal coating helps everything. Usually when you seal coat it, you also stripe it. Were those included in your proposals, which is really important? So, um, if you wanna paint your, our, our parking lots black, make them look nice. Um, at the, at the road commission, we try to go with the lowest bidder, if they're qualified. And I think that's good use of taxpayer dollars. And I also liked your motion. Uh, I thought a hundred and seventy thousand dollars extra for the bathroom is a whole lot of money. Can't believe how much it costs to build a bathroom.
We're in the same business.
Yeah, a, and it might be a good business. Um, but I, I like the thing to take a low bid, but you also have experience with one of the bidders, which is a very, which is a very good thing. So the, the, all, all I have to really comment on is they're probably all fine. And, but the, but the paving people don't, we, we don't, we don't seal coat. We don't paint our roads. It's not something you do. I think the striping is a more important part of the proposal. There is some evidence that the crack sealing they do is, isn't important to keep the water out of the pavement. And if that's included in your bids, that is very important.
I think it's in there.
Thank you.
I think it was in all three of them.
I looked it up, and, uh, Black Magic is on Eighth Street.
Okay, so. I'm, I'm.
But that's not local, that's the city.
Yeah, City, Buckley, and Inarlocken, so, uh, it's, uh.
I kind of had the same guess that they probably can all get the job done, so I would almost just go with the lowest bid personally, but. Does anybody have any other information to add?
The County Commissioner once told me, when I said, hey, why don't you go with somebody that you know what you're gonna get, they said, well, how about learn another company and have an opportunity for them to provide a service that you might like, at a cheaper price? And I found that to be true. And a good, a good suggestion.
Okay. What are your thoughts, Chuck?
I'd make a motion to award the projects to the low bidder.
Support.
Most main supported to, you said, with, um,
Picture Perfect.
To award the resealing bid for the Town Hall and, uh, Long Lake, or Silver Lake, excuse me, Recreation Area, to Picture Perfect, uh, for the, uh, total amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, Anne, can we have a roll on that?
Uh, Corn.
Yes.
Seth McCumber.
Yes.
Lap.
Yes.
L McManus.
Yes.
Uh, Schmuckle.
Yes.
And Jay McManus.
Yes, thank you. All right, uh, new, uh, new business, item B, consideration of Potter Road repair cost sharing with Grand Traverse County Road Commission. So I think that's what Al's been waiting for, and Chris, go ahead.
Chris is gonna have a presentation, and I'm here to support him. Uh, so I recently met with Dan Watkins, along with Supervisor Blondshine, um, regarding Potter Road. And in your packet are some beautiful pictures of that road. Um, and I don't know if you've driven it, but it's in pretty rough shape.
Yeah, it'll kill you.
Yep. So because that is, um, a local road, the road commission, through their motor vehicle transportation fund, are only allowed to spend fifty percent on the roadway repairs. So in order to repair that road fully to, um, you know, a high-quality paved road, um, it would be about a half mile worth, and the cost would be about, um, five hundred thousand dollars total. So with the road commission being able to spend two fifty, he is looking to Garfield and Blair to, um, provide the, the other fifty percent, and, you know, and split it into quarter, quarter, at one twenty-five apiece. So, um, I, he recently told me that his board has approved for it to be turned into gravel as a solution. Um, although in our meeting, he talked about filling it with gravel, the holes, as a Band-Aid, or cutting out sections of it as another, well, maybe a little bit better Band-Aid solution versus doing the whole road. Um, but it's not, you know, a long-term solution. So he came to us asking if we would be willing to partner, um, to get a fix, um, correctly sooner than later. Um, obviously, there's our road millage, um, funds for that, but, you know, Alan being able to speak to that, I think that's more, uh, planned, uh, activities. And this is something that just kind of came up, um, and wasn't part of their, you know, twenty twenty-five plan.
It came up several years ago.
Did it?
Yeah, and we were, when we were told it was okay, cause we were gonna get it switched to a, uh, federal road. It was part of the apology tour.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I didn't, didn't know that. So I actually looked back at some records and found in May of twenty fourteen, the, um, former board approved a resolution of support for a collaboration agreement for repairing Town Line Road.
Yep.
Um, a, uh, collaboration between the road commission, East Bay, and Garfield Township, where we committed to spend a hundred and sixty thousand and one sixty East Bay as well, to repair that road. And also, um, the importance, or, or what was considered is that they're going to, um, build on to the, uh, airport terminal, potentially increase more traffic and stuff like that. It's kind of like a gateway to the airport. So I know that was kind of brought up, and also, um, I know the airport was asked to be part of this.
Has Town Line ever been improved? Did that, had, that ever happened? I don't think it ever did.
I don't think so. Not as of yet.
Needs to be done.
Yeah, that's true. I, I will say I drove this quarter-mile section of Potter Road, and I'll never do that to my vehicle again. Probably the worst section of the road I've ever driven.
I'm down to my road. It'll be the same thing.
Yeah, I tell you, this is really bad. I mean, it, it's really strange. It's, you know, it's, it's, uh, the oldest section of that road. I mean, that connection was made. I don't know when the connection from Roush to, on Hope, from Roush to the dead end there was made, but it's that section, the oldest section of that road, but it, uh, I kind of question how much of that deterioration happened during the construction of that roundabout, too. There was probably a lot of heavy equipment on that road, but it is shot right now. It is bad.
I have to say the same thing, because when they were doing the frame year before, on my road, my road was fine, but then all the trucks were coming down and making the U-turn, Nicole was second, that's what, that's what burnt our road up, too, so.
So, um, I, and I don't, and so it was us and Blair. I don't know where Nicole stands on it, and maybe wanna comment or not comment, I don't care, but I, I, uh, I don't know what, what our past practice is, or what we would be looking to do, but.
Do we have money in the road budget?
I have no idea. Do we really, do we have a road budget?
Do we have a road budget?
I don't even know that we have a road budget.
There's a Metro Act fund that comes from people who use the roadways for internets, cable, what have you. They have to pay so much per foot. I don't know what that amounts at this point.
Yeah.
Is that what yours is?
Yeah. So you could pay this out of the metro fund?
Well, part of it.
Part of it.
As long as you spend it be, in the road right-of-way, you can do it.
We could look into that.
Al, is there any, I don't know if you wanna step up and answer questions, but I, I know it's not a primary road, but.
Yeah. I brought for you tonight, there at your places. It wasn't really pre-planned. I just got the call from Dan today saying it was out of town. Um, this is our, our, there's a single sheet, which is our local road policy, which comprises about eighty percent of our roads. And eighty percent of our roads total have a repair budget of, uh, five hundred thousand dollars, is what's in our road commission budget. Five percent of twenty million dollars is, and, and we're gonna look at this, but unless we significantly start shortchanging something else, there's not much more money to add to this. We can, we can, right now, our, our PESA ratings and the, the standards that the engineering people look, our, our primary roads are in relatively good shape. Eighty percent of them are eighty-three or eighty-four percent are good or fair. And we can start stealing money from that, but the primary roads are roads everyone in our community uses. And so the secondary roads like this, are, where the road commission is in a really tight spot. And years ago, why the legislator didn't, legislator didn't fix, they made this, the, the, the road commission's responsible for them, but the, but the townships are responsible for funding them, is a real bad plan. So, we know we have a lot of these roads that are bad. And what, what our manager ha- has proposed to do, turn this into gravel, is a, is a little bit better plan than that. They're, they're, they plan on hiring a company that will pulverize this into gravel, and then inject some lime into the earth, so that it stabilizes it and hardens up like concrete does. The top surface, the top eight or nine inches, will be really, really hard, like a roadbed. The problems will be, when the moisture gets at it, it will over time loosen up again. And our engineers don't feel that local roads with traffic volumes above one thousand should be gravel. Uh, I made a special point of addressing this at our meeting last Thursday night, cause that, cause he proposed this, and I said, well, what's the engineering? Well, he doesn't feel any less, anything, and there's, we, we have car coats on that section of road of thirty-four hundred that are two years old. So nothing ahead of, north of a thousand should be gravel roads, and yet we're, so there, there's some solutions, depending on how much money the townships can find. And we're, and we're not trying to put the townships on notice or breaking your arms. We're just saying, these, this road serves a lot of your residents, and we have to figure this out together if we can. And so we could pave it, like they traditionally do, a two-inch base course and a, and a inch and a half top course, and, and, and Chris alluded to the fact that it was about five hundred thousand dollars, and that's the general range these things in, although they're, they're, the smaller they are, the more they seem to tip that, tip that over, and the larger they are, the less the, the cost goes down a little bit. So we are prepared to try a couple of other things. And if we turn this into gravel, we would chip seal it like we're doing over our paved roads, maybe one, two, or three times, and see how that traffic would hold up to, um, thirty-four, the volume of thirty-four hundred, cause we're, this is not the only one that's gonna come apart. Um, there's, there's a couple in our township that are, that are not so good, a couple in Peninsula Township, and I don't get much further out than that, so I, I don't know, but, but I, I know that we've got a list of them that's, they're not in very good condition. So what we're asking, what, what, what Dan talked to Chris about, Garfield Township has been a good partner with the road commission, has been many good projects over the, you're, you're responsible to the citizens, like me, who live here and try to help out. Whatever you can decide, you can, we will upgrade that road from the, we're, we're gonna grind it up and try this. If you wanna go along and help us pay for the triple chip seal, then that's, uh, we'll, but we might sort of have a road out there, and we'll see how it holds up. Um, it's not, it's, it, it would never be money wasted. We could, once it's ground up now into real small particles, we could, we could, after it's chip sealed, if we say after one year, not good enough, we could still put a coat of paving over it. They, they believe, and I believe as somebody who was in the paving business before, that it's too bad to repave over the way it is. That is just a waste of money. Potter Road further to the east got an overlay, maybe in twenty fourteen, Chuck fifteen. And it was a, that road was not in very good shape either, but it got a inch or inch and a half overlay, and now maybe seven, or eight, or nine, or maybe it was sixteen, I don't know, ten years later. It's okay. But that's, this section of the road is too poor to just try to wedge it and overlay it.
Yeah, we did that on South Airport Road. And now when you drive over it, it's like thump, thump, thump.
Yeah, it's, it, it just doesn't.
It eventually.
It eventually. It, it justifies this, and, and what we're proposing on Town Line, because it's not nearly as bad, what we're gonna do on Town Line, and we're funding this, so we're, and, and we asked East Bay for a contribution, and they said they couldn't. We asked the airport, because I know in the big cities, they have expressway lanes going to the airport, and somehow the, all these expressways somehow go to the airports. And we, and yet Town Line goes to the airport and the airport authority. I don't, are you on the airport board, Chuck?
No.
Okay. The airport told us they couldn't fund any connecting road for some, uh, we're gonna fund a, a medium-priced, low-priced repair. Our full recondition on Town Line was, uh, one point six million, and we're gonna try three hundred thousand dollars to see how that does. Uh, does include the culvert replacement, which was a lot, a big thing on there, which the permit's good for five more years, so we can go back and do it later. We're not, I don't think we're asking for money for Town Line, but you, you brought up Town Line. The townships have been asked to do this before. But, um, I, we're, we're planning it. We've got a budget for Town Line. We know it's been getting bad. We're prepared to do something about it. This Potter Road thing just came out of the blue. And we're looking for help.
How long of a section is it?
It's a half a mile. That's what Dan, Dan said, twenty, twenty-five or twenty-seven hundred feet, or something like that.
What are you guys thinking, Blair? I mean, we're, this is like a shared.
I don't think that this section of Potter Road came out of the blue. We recognize.
Nicole.
Just so he, we're recording, just so he can hear you on the, on the tape, so.
Um, I, I do not believe that this section of Potter Road came out of the blue. I don't think that just this spring, when the weather started warming, the road just erupted. We've talked about this section of road for five years. Um, two years quite a bit, as well as Roush Road, in the condition of Roush Road. Because Roush Road and this section have always been local roads, although the road commission was recognizing that they were becoming primary roads and, um, thoroughfare. Um, Chuck, what was the word for the Roush Road?
Connectors.
Connectors. Correct. My, my question to the road commission was this. Um, I understand local road versus primary road. I understand the MTF money, fifty percent of the funding, that's all they can spend. I get that. My question was, what determines a local road versus a primary road? I was told, traffic count. Okay. And then the road commission puts the label on our roads, based on traffic counts. When were the last traffic counts in Grand Traverse County done? For these designated roads? Years. Years. I just learned that Potter Road actually had a traffic count two years ago. Um, thirty-two to thirty-four hundred cars, I think, was the count. Two years ago, I'm assuming that traffic count was done for the roundabout project. They probably needed the count for their roundabout project. So two years ago, thirty-four hundred cars on one count, that roundabout is dumping twice as many now, guaranteed. So my, my other question was, fifty percent of the funding MTF money, what about the other fifty percent coming from millage money? I was told, millage money is already allocated for other projects for the next two years. They said there's no contingency fund in the event that one of your road just erupts like this road? Unfortunately, no. Which I was surprised by that. I, my township, we don't have a specific road fund in our budget. Um, we, we have what we collect from the, um, charter.
The Metro Act.
The Metro Act. What money we have left over after budgeting time goes into our building replacement fund for our building that's falling apart. Our residents pay a millage for road maintenance and upkeep that the road commission collects. The township doesn't collect any of that money. So, quite frankly, not that we don't wanna partner, I wish we could. I literally don't have the money in a budget. So I guess my question is, why aren't we using millage money for a situation like this? For fifty percent of it. MTF funds can pay for fifty percent. And residents' millage money, my residents who are impacted by this, their millage money could pay for the other fifty percent. Versus my township residents over on this side of town, who probably have never even been on Potter Road.
Okay, thank you.
That's my initial thought. When I got the email from Dan, I about fell out of my chair. Because I thought we were gonna have another discussion, and I didn't know that the road commission was gonna discuss this at their meetings, which I think was the day after.
Could be.
Or the week after we met with Dan.
So Al, I don't know if you have any more comments. Uh, I don't know which way, what we wanna do with this one.
We do, we budget every single cent we have. And our projects are about, well, you know, we got Bluff Road sitting out there, seven years. Seven years it's been closed, because it's a local road, and there's no way, way to, there's no way to fund it.
It's zero traffic.
And, well, probably, probably a thou, probably a thousand.
Not that part of Bluff Road.
Yeah, it was, it was getting there, just south of there, it was the last time it was. And we have, uh, committed, uh, we, we put it out for bids last month to get traffic counts. We used to have engineering technicians. We used to have engineering technicians do the traffic counts. We're hiring, we're going to put it out for bids to have a company do the traffic counts to try to do every road, depending on how the bids come in. But the Road Commission really just has, you know, I'm a really conservative business guy, who's been in business for himself his whole life. I'm really tight with the money. The Road Commission does not have enough money to do its job. The state legislature says the townships are supposed to help with this. And if the townships can't, then, then we'll do what we can. And I, you know, you're, everybody, anybody's welcome to come to the meetings, to have input on the budgets. We don't have any money left. I mean, we could do something else, we could do less snow plowing, we could let the primary roads wear down, we could put some pay cuts across our employees, there's, see how many would stay. We could do all kinds of things, but what we have is a system that is working with the money that's acceptable. But with eight, seven or 800 miles of secondary roads, there is no solution for the Road Commission but to get yelled at.
What are these other, I mean, is, the request is for 125,000, right? From Garfield?
Is that what he asked?
Yeah. But then also the same amount from Blair, which-
Yeah, assuming they were going to-
Repay.
We'll, we'll do, I mean, if, if Garfield wants to do it and Blair won't or can't, we'll do what we can with the money that's allocated. We're going to do something because it's undrivable. We dumped a bunch of gravel on it last week, they told me, and I drove it today and it's, it's unbelievable. So, we're going to have to do something and the thing is to try something, try a low-cost improvement.
When would you do that?
He has it scheduled for May, and I don't know what we'll do till then, Joe. I'm going to suggest that we, we're going to try to maybe base, buy some asphalt millings and put them in these holes and see if it'll stay longer than the gravel. Have our grader go out there and grade this up again with asphalt. They kind of pack and we might have some, we're going to have to do some other temporary things after today's, my truck will never be the same like Chuck said.
I drove it once, I won't do that again.
It's dangerous.
It was, I can't say as I've ever been on a worse road. I've driven a lot of dirt roads in South Dakota and they're a lot better than that thing is.
Right. And that's the, Kalamazoo's grinding up, Kalamazoo County is grinding up a lot of their roads and just regrading them because you can regrade a gravel road. I don't see that for a metropolis like Traverse City area, Grand Travis County is becoming. I don't see that as a very good fix for us. I don't think that level of service will be acceptable to our residents. But somehow, the money, it either has to come part of it from, you know, at some, at the county commission meeting, somebody suggested we ask for an extra mill or two, that we have a three-mill road millage. And those of us on the road board, we just couldn't get our arms around that much additional taxes, many, for an ask when our millage was renewed. So, I guess we're asking individually as the projects come up.
I know, you know, if you've been around long enough and you remember the history of that road, I mean, it, it didn't use to go through to Rusch, it was a dead end. It only went in there at quarter or three quarters of a mile, or two thirds of a mile, whatever, less than half, whatever, do my math on it, but it went in there, always stopped. And then it, they connected, they filled the big hole and connected, and I'm going to guess that was 25 years ago, maybe. And it still didn't get a lot of traffic there, but that intersection was so dangerous. I agree wholeheartedly with Nicole, that roundabout went in, now it's a nice, safe way for people to make that left turn onto that road and shoot down to Keystone.
Getting more traffic.
And it's, I'd be real curious, well, the traffic counts probably aren't bad right now because people are avoiding it now. But when it was still travelable, it was probably some pretty high traffic counts. So, something needs to be done. I don't, I don't know the solution. I don't know, us throwing money at it is, I'd leave that up to the board, what we want to do. The Road Commission's asking for some money, I guess I'd bring it back to the board and see what you want to do. So, it is an awful road right now. Really bad. Chris?
So, he had mentioned how the Town Line project scope changed from one something million to like 300,000. Is the Road Commission planning on using the 160 that we've pledged? Could that be reallocated? And should I contact, work with the Road Commission to see what the price might be for the chip seal? You know, the, the 125 was a cost share with Blair for a total redo. Maybe the short-term plan will be effective and not be as expensive. Maybe it'll come in at 50,000. And when you, and that will be in conversation and then come back. And maybe when you consider the 160 that isn't going to be used that we pledged, and if it's 50, well, that's 110 that you're in the positive, if you want to think of it that way.
If, if the Road Commission's going to do the crush and do the liming and do that part of it, you know, if you can get us an idea, maybe we ask, we request what that triple seal coat, chip and seal costs, and we come back at our next meeting and consider approving that amount to help out with that project. Does that sound okay, Al, if we did something like that?
I think whatever, I think it's up, it's definitely up to the board.
You need to go to the mic, Al, sorry.
You're loud enough.
I'm comfortable with whatever you decide to do.
Okay.
You know, I just know as a resident of Garfield Township, that Garfield has been pretty citizen-friendly to the road projects. Chuck, you've been involved in a lot of these and I don't know that they would happen without the township. Something has to happen on Potter Road. It's, it's what level we can do. I'm sure if you work with the manager and our engineering staff, we can fix something. I think they can guess at a triple chip seal price without putting it out to bids. Because we have a pretty large chip seal project going on, a lot of our pretty good roads to keep them pretty good. And we're going to ask that our chip sealer put, add this to his project. We've got a couple different adds that we're asking them to add. And it could be a double chip seal. Once we get it into good shape, if we can make it look like a road and shed water to the shoulders, sealing the surface is the thing, whether it's chip seal, whether it's asphalt paving, whatever we do to seal that surface so the water doesn't go in the road, then we'll make it last longer. We're going to start, in, in May, we have some workshops, so we're going to, we're going to start looking at our secondary roads. I'm just not sure, you know, everybody's excited about some alternate plans. I just don't know what we'll give up to put money into this.
Well, the thing I like about the idea is if you're going to crush it, put the lime in, try to stabilize the road, and, and we can, we can cost share in the chip sealing with a little, you know, some, a little less commitment, you're saying that won't be wasted. Then if we do come back in a year or two years and pave it, at least that base is probably already in place.
Yeah, we think shaping it up, unless there's some unknown, shaping this up like a real road again with a, with a suitable crown and a little bit of work on the, so the water runs off at the shoulders, that that, that that will be able to be wedged over, which is a, you know, kind of a skim coat to, to take out all the minor irregularities. It could be skimmed and then paved over, we believe.
Okay.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I would say, Chris, work with, work with the Road Commission on the bid on that chip seal. I don't think we'd take any action tonight, I don't think, until we have a better idea of what that's going to cost, we can maybe, you're going to do it, maybe we have, probably a little wiggle room here to get this done. So, and if somebody feels differently, yeah, Chloe?
I personally feel like townships don't have a lot of opportunity to improve their community. There's not much we can do with our money. So, when I saw this, I thought, that's a good use of taxpayer dollars, personally. So, I personally would contribute the 125. I think it's a good use, it's a bad road, it's in our township, it's going to be more used. It's one of the things we are responsible for. I know we have a millage too that we pay, but it's not working, it's not funding. And so, I don't see any problem with the township contributing towards it. It is a function we could legally spend money on, it needs to be done. I think that's actually a good price for that road.
If we commit-
Personally, I don't know, but-
I don't disagree. If we committed the 160, where is that?
It's still there, it's in the Road Commission's funds. The Road Commission-
In our, in our bank account under the Road Commission funds.
Exactly. Each year, they give each of the townships X amount of dollars depending upon their number of roads. And then, that can accumulate through three years, so we have-
We're not allowed to use that money on this project.
Right. You said it's possible.
No, it's not. We were told no. We were told by the manager that we have-
Okay.
Well, that's, we were having that discussion earlier and we were talking about using that money.
I don't know, I wasn't there.
Nick, you need to go.
We asked.
Nicole, you need to go.
We asked, that was the question I asked. I'm like, this would be a great project and we do have some money. It's the road money, and technically, the Road Commission, they don't give the township that money to put into our budget, they just account for it in their budget. So, I think Blair had like $46,000. They can't use that money because it's MTF money. It's MTF money that the Road Commission allocates for the township. It was a system that was set up that wasn't well thought through-
It would negate the 50%.
Is what they told us.
Fifty percent. You can't do 50% twice.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And I just want to say, it's not that Blair Township doesn't want to be a good citizen to the Road Commission or a good partner with the Road Commission, we do. I mean, it's, the roads are vital in our community. But I don't have the tax base that Garfield Township has. I don't have the residents, I don't have the population, and I'm not the only township in Grand Travis County. I think the majority of them are actually in the same situation that Blair Township is in. Is it something at budgeting time that we're going to have to perhaps look at? Like, oh boy, maybe we do need to be allocating $100,000 a year into a road fund. I know Long Lake does it, but Long Lake's is even earmarked specific for SAD projects. This isn't a SAD project, so this wouldn't even help Long Lake. So, that's certainly something that I'm willing to discuss at tomorrow's budget hearing because it is important. But I feel like you don't think that Blair wants to be a good partner, and that's not the case at all. And I'm almost offended by how, and maybe it's just me because I'm not fired up about this topic, but we are a good partner. We are a good partner.
Nicole, you got to tell us how you really feel.
A lot of statistics that need updating, primary road versus local road.
All right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I think, I just think that right now, the Road Commission doesn't have a lot of answers without the, without township contributions.
Right.
And we're, we're in the, in the town, you know, sometimes, and like I said, I've been involved with Garfield Road Projects. I know Garfield has, because of probably the tax base, like Nicole mentions, probably has more opportunity. You had that mire, we'll, maybe we'll, we'll have a little more-
That's going to go huge into your millage.
Yeah, yeah, it will. So, the, the, the number of road miles and the cost of the road miles leave the Road Commission with not that many options.
And I guess that's where I'm confused. If we committed 160,000 to Town Line, did we really commit that or was it just out of that other tax money?
Well, it's, it is money that the Road Commission has designated to the township. Each year, they put X amount in and it can grow for three years and then they'll make a decision what to do with it if we don't do something.
Well, I guess I'm, because maybe it deserves some follow-up to the, to the manager's, can we, why can't we use if, you know, that money? I mean, let's follow up that way. I do not disagree with Chloe, I think we need to-
That money came out of the same-
Put some money in the roads, but-
That money came out of the same fund that's providing the Road Commission's 50%.
So, we can't use that money because it came out of the same-
So, it's basically-
They're using it to fund their portion.
Right.
It's like, they'd say it's got to be so much local and so much-
Right.
State funds for projects. Oh, if you take the state money and run it through a local, then put it in there, it's not-
They can't do that, okay. And that makes sense.
But the Road Commission's not actually, well, the portion that the Road Commission's paying is our portion that we have.
Okay. And that makes sense. But I mean, if, if, you know, they're asking for 125, but that's on a $500,000 project, so if they don't do the $500,000 project, then we want to give 125. So, I guess I'd like to know more on what Plan B is, and I have no problem helping fund that. And then, then anticipating that probably a year or two, we're going to probably fund it more to get it done right. I think it's important, but I, I'd like to know more before I just put a number out there. If they, go with the 125 and they only put a $200,000 fix on it, then, you know, then we really helped them out, you know? So, I think that we need to know more about it.
We could frame the motion, if the board wants, that we would contribute 125 if there's a partnership from Blair Township. If not, reevaluate.
No, not to put pressure on you, but-
No, we understand that.
Partnership there because they don't have the money.
Well, I think we need to get a little more information and do a little more fact-finding.
Right. I do too.
I'd be, I'd like to defer making a decision for a couple of weeks.
Till our next meeting and we'll have an idea. Let's get, Chris, can you get some more information from the, and if you can set up a meeting, I'd be glad to go with you and sit down with Dan and just talk this out, find out, you know, let Al know when we're going to be there, Al can even sit in on it if he's available. So, I, I think we definitely want to help get that road fixed. We just need, if it's not Plan A, then let's find out what Plan B is and figure out how much we want to put toward that.
Right.
So, does that sound all right?
Good.
So, there isn't really an action item necessarily, so we'll just move on, I guess, for right now.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thanks, Al.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole, for your comments as well, so. Our next item is discussion of the Township Assessor's position and employee performance, I believe. And I believe we're going to have a motion to go into, probably go into closed session to discuss the employee performance. So, before we do that, if, if either Nicole or Al had any other comments they wanted to make, I'm sure you probably don't want to stick around while we're going into closed session if we indeed do that. So, I didn't know if Nicole just came to, you know, observe tonight or-
I honestly just think, because I, I value the support now.
She said, they're saying get on the thing.
I came tonight because I knew what was on the agenda for discussion and I value you as colleagues and fellow board members, so I wanted to hear your input. My board meeting is in a couple of weeks, so I actually took notes tonight so I can share some of the things I heard tonight and present it to my board.
Okay.
Because sadly, we don't have a manager. You did such a great job.
And Chris and I went to the city commission meeting last week and we learned how they operate down there, so. So, so it's good. All right. I guess I would bring it back to the board and is there a motion out there somewhere?
Yeah, we, we received an email from the assessor asking if we go into, go into closed session to discuss our performance. So, I move that the board meet in closed session under Section 8A of the Open Meetings Act to consider a personality violation of an employee.
I support it.
Motion made, supported, go into closed session as stated. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Got to be a roll call vote.
Yes, I'm sorry, you got me again.
Two thirds of a roll.
Uh, Laney McManus.
Laney.
Laney?
Yes.
Yes. Schmuckel?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Comber?
Yes.
Lap?
Yes.
And Joe McManus?
Yes, okay, we'll go into the other, other meeting room real quick. Okay. I'm going to run you guys off, I want to let you know we're going to-
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Let's do this again soon.